Please stand.
Thank you. So that would be if you would, a dear lord first, we thank you for our staff and the community that they serve and for all the provisions and the groceries that you have provided. We ask that you give us, guide us and give wisdom to the council as they make decisions for the betterment of the citizenry. Help us to realize and remember your example as the ultimate servant leader so that we act and communicate in a way that would meet your expectations. And help us to always remember that as long as you're in our future, we will be blessed. Amen.
Mayor, we're now having Joel Smith with Cub Scout PAC four oh seven seven will now be doing a flag presentation and will be leading us in the United States Flag Pledge and also the Texas Flag Pledge. Joel.
Color guard, attention. Audience please rise. Color guard four, march.
Watch your, watch your, watch your, watch your.
We have a local access cable channel, one ninety two I think it is, more of.
Please stand.
Thank you. So that would be if you would, a dear lord first, we thank you for our staff and the community that they serve and for all the provisions and the groceries that you have provided. We ask that you give us, guide us and give wisdom to the council as they make decisions for the betterment of the citizenry. Help us to realize and remember your example as the ultimate servant leader so that we act and communicate in a way that would meet your expectations. And help us to always remember that as long as you're in our future, we will be blessed. Amen.
Mayor, we're now having Joel Smith with Cub Scout PAC four oh seven seven will now be doing a flag presentation and will be leading us in the United States Flag Pledge and also the Texas Flag Pledge. Joel.
Color guard, attention. Audience please rise. Color guard four, march.
Watch your, watch your, watch your.
Color guard, please post the colors. Scouts salute. Please recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right, well I appreciate you guys inviting us for this ceremony. This is the AOL den, these are fifth graders, soon to be scouts. I'd like to introduce Sebastian, Steven, Rogan, Rebecca and Kate. Thank you guys.
Please be seated and one more time thank you, the scout of America because I can't call a boy scout or girl scout anymore, have to be scout of America. Like you see at the beginning, two gentlemen brought the flag here and hit our projector. We need a bigger CD hall, right? Thank you. The next one, Mr. Al Camacho will announce the event. Go ahead.
Thank you. Family movie night, summer reading program, adult GED, ESL classes and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times so please check the website. They're having a Happy Birthday Harry, which is a Harry Potter celebration which will be held Wednesday, July thirty first at two PM and you can come dressed as your favorite Harry Potter character. Teen Space Laser Tag will be Friday, July twenty sixth at six PM and registration is required. In community programs, the CERT classes, the applications are available online on the city website and they'll begin August first for Citizens Emergency Response Team, the CERT classes, which begin September ninth through October fifth. We have a good Haltum City Community Day which is going to be held at the Haltum Theater, July twenty seventh from nine AM to twelve noon. There's numerous events. And so you want to take advantage of the opportunity to know your city and the citizens. The benefits provided are donuts provided by the Haltum City Law Enforcement Association. You can take photos with the Haltum City Fire Department. Coffee is provided by the Christian Center. There's also a toy drive for free Christmas Day outreach to every child. Every person who brings a toy with a value of ten dollars or more will be registered to win a fifty dollar gift card. The drawing will be held at eleven AM so register only if you desire to be in the drawing. Region champs, the Haltum High School Buffalo Booster Club will have merchandise to buy in advance for the season. Live music will be held by Haltum's own Morgan Wright. Clothing connection drop off for gently used clothes will be there to donate for kids in need in the BISD area. The Veterans Memorial Park will have a representative to take orders for bricks to purchase with your message installed on the site. Haltum Strong Squad will be in attendance to meet you and raise awareness of how to serve Haltum City with Haltum Strong t-shirts available for purchase. The Birdville Historical Society will be on hand to share history and promote the museum.
Family movie night, summer reading program, adult GED, ESL classes, and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times, so please check the website. They're having a Happy Birthday Harry, which is a Harry Potter celebration, which will be held Wednesday, July thirty-first, at two PM, and you can come dressed as your favorite Harry Potter character. Teen Space Laser Tag will be Friday, July twenty-sixth at six, six PM, and registration is required. In community programs, the CERT classes, the applications are available online on the city website, and they'll begin August first for Citizens Emergency Response Team, the CERT classes, which begin September ninth through October fifth. We have a good Haltem City Community Day, which is going to be held at the Haltem Theater, July twenty-seventh from nine AM to twelve noon. There's numerous events. And so you want to take advantage of the opportunity to know your city and the citizens. The benefits provided are donuts provided by the Haltem City Law Enforcement Association. You can take photos with the Haltem City Fire Department. Coffee is provided by the Christian Center. There's also a toy drive for free Christmas Day outreach to every child. Every person who brings a toy with a value of ten dollars or more will be registered to win a fifty-dollar gift card. The drawing will be held at eleven AM, so register only if you desire to be in the drawing. Region champs, uh, the Haltem High School Buffalo Booster Club will have merchandise to buy in advance for the season. Live music will be, uh, held by Haltem's own Morgan Wright. Clothing Connection drop-off for gently-used clothes will be there to donate for kids in need in the BISD area. The Veterans Memorial Park will have a representative to take orders for bricks to purchase with your message installed on the site. Haltem Strong Squad will be in attendance to meet you and raise awareness of how to serve Haltem City with Haltem Strong T-shirts available for purchase. The Birdville Historical Society will be on hand to share history and promote the museum. The Adopt a Pet through the Haltem City Animal Shelter will be there to, and take donations of food or pet toys. Council members will also be able to be there to be, uh, meet the public. And Free Buttons Haltem Stronger Together will be there while they last, and lastly, you'll be also allowed to register to vote. And finally, the Citizens Police Academy classes will be start, starting August the twenty-first on, uh, from seven to nine PM, and will continue for ten weeks on Wednesday nights. Classes will be held at the Police Department and AA registrations will be handled online. So be sure to check the city webpage for online applications. This class is an overall view of the Police Department and will involve some hands-on experiences and will allow citizens to meet many of the officers and give them a better understanding of what our officers' responsibilities are while serving the city. And that's our announcement, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Next item will be, uh, several items will be important. The first one will be recognition for city employee longtime service worker, Mr. Christie Poot. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Good evening. It is my privilege and honor to be able to recognize one of our wonderful employees that has been with us for twenty years. He recently retired this month, so we're very sad trying to fill the gap for all of the knowledge that he's brought to the city through the years. Uh, our Parks and Recreation Crew, it really kind of tend to go unnoticed. They fly under the radar. They do not like to be recognized very much. Um, but we, we drug this one out of retirement to come in. So Carl, why don't you come on up? Uh, Carl Milius was our Landscape Crew Leader, again, had been with the city for twenty years, uh, shared with us his many, many skills and his industrial knowledge of landscaping and, and plant and tree identification, uh, as well as irrigation projects. So it, it was a pleasure to work with Carl in the time that I did, and we just thank Carl for his service. So I'm going to present him with the certificate, but we're not done yet. So there's that, Carl. Thank you very much. And we'd also like to, uh, yes, y'all can applaud. And I believe Carl had a lot of good buddies. He made, he made friends in a lot of groups, um, did a lot of work for different groups, and I believe the Garden Club would like to come up and say a few words.
Mayor and Council, my name's Betty Porter. I've been a longtime member of the Garden Club. I'm one of about three charter members that still attend. So we were instrumental, I feel like we were instrumental, in obtaining a credible yard man when we didn't have one. He may be our third one, but, um, the Garden Club and the Beautification Board really talked to the council at the time, and we wanted our own certified gardener and spray person and all the stuff that comes with him. So we wanted to recognize him from the Garden Club. We bought him a bird bath, and we also are giving him a gift card. So we appreciate him, and I hope all of you did as well. So thank you, Carl. We're going to go after all of the voters. Would you like to talk? Would you like to talk?
Thank you.
Hey. Your face is red.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Christie, and everyone attending here. And the next one, Mr. Recphill will present the, uh, certificate of recognition for the Waste Management.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Waste Connection.
Waste Connection, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, first of all, I just want to take this opportunity to kind of brag on Waste Connections for a minute. There, there are solid waste providers that pick up our trash and, but they do a lot more than that. They don't just do it one time a week like in a lot of cities, but they do it two times. They'll pick up just about anything that their, that won't break their truck, put it in there. So we really appreciate them, but a lot of people don't really know just to the extent of what they do. They go above and beyond. Uh, and I will read this, but I just kind of want to be a little bit detailed on what they do. Now, we have a lot of volunteer groups come in and help the elderly or people with disabled, like Mid-Cities Care Corp, for example, for example. Anytime that they need a roll-off or any help for getting rid of any kind of, uh, uh, waste, uh, these guys, uh, Waste Connections are right there to help. Every time I call, they're there to help. Though a lot of people don't know, but every year, they pick an elementary school, and, and this is every year, and they donate, uh, in excess of a hundred and forty assembled bikes, bicycles and helmets for the, uh, for the kids in our community. And their employees actually assemble these things. That's a lot of them when you consider over a hundred and forty. They do that for our, for our citizens and for our kids, and we just think that's a remarkable thing. The other thing is, is recently we had some bad storms that came through our city, a lot of, uh, a lot of debris. Well, you know, you get four free dumps at the dump, at the waste station that they run a year if you're a citizen, if you want to use that. Well, they've been taking on all that debris, and they're still doing it, and they're not charging against the four free dumps per citizen. Now, if you think about that, they're absorbing all the cost, which is serious tonnage of trees and all that debris. And they, you know, the transportation and this, and taking it off to larger landfills and everything that they do. So they've absorbed a lot of costs for the citizens. And they've also relaxed their bundling requirements, uh, and they'll pick up if they, so they can get it in the truck without tearing up the truck, they'll take it. Uh, the only time that they've refused us is when they just simply don't have the equipment, uh, you know, to do that. Uh, but anyway, we, we just really appreciate them so much. And I'm going to read this, but before I do, I'd like them to come up here. Marty Grant, uh, where are you? I know you're close. Uh, he's a supervisor out at Waste Connection, and Norm Bulash, a local celebrity here. Everybody knows Norm. So we appreciate you guys so much. So let me read this, and then we'll present it to you. Certificate of Recognition. Whereas Waste Connection serves Haltem City, providing for both residential and commercial waste collection and disposal. And throughout a period of over twenty-three years, Waste Connection has served Haltem City, it has also continued a practice of going above and beyond expectations to assist the community in many different and valuable ways, including the following: helping with donations throughout the year for those less fortunate, sponsorships of, of events like the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, providing over a hundred and forty bicycles and helmets each year for children at Christmas time, assisting the community with the collection and disposal of recent storm debris by absorbing the cost of many tons of debris for the less fortunate and the citizens that just need their help. Whereas Waste Connection has not only been proven to be a reliable service, they also are a community-minded company, aiding citizens and providing resources for the welfare of Haltem City. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Ann Trong, and the city council, and all our citizens, wish to publicly recognize Waste Connections in Haltem City for their contributions to the community and the citizens.
Thank you, guys.
I'll take a picture.
Okay. Everybody wants picture with Norm.
Show them the ring. Throw darts at it.
No, real quick, uh, we appreciate this recognition. Uh, we get calls from Rex and Keith once in a while, and, you know, by no means are we perfect, but we know we can improve and we continue to help the city wherever we can. So we appreciate it.
I've been here a long time, and I truly appreciate your business. It's, we've had our office here for, as many, since we started in, in, um, in Haltem City, and we cover a lot of cities in that office, but, um, I've been there for that long. So, and I truly appreciate Haltem City, and thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Well, the next one will be recognition for one of the important lady already left our city, but she's still hanging around here. Uh, Mr. Junior Fong, she a former of the, uh, financial director, and I want to make you feel like home because I'm Asian-American mayor presented to you. So don't feel like I'm a stranger, okay? Come here, ma'am. A lot of people didn't know she were the, uh, financial director for many cities, especially the city of Fort Worth. When she left the city of Fort Worth, uh, going down, uh, up, I don't know. But by the way, we have her for many years. She worked here before. She left for city of Fort Worth and many other city. Then she come back here. Now she has so much money, she don't want to work anymore. That's important when you work and the end of your life, I mean, the, out to the end of the road of your life, you have enough money to enjoy. And I, I asked her, you want to work more? She said, no. Today she come in our city, I thought she applied for public work, but she said, no. Okay, then today, I would like to present this be a, a big certificate from the Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada. And the certificate of recognition for budget preparation for Mr. Junior Fong, Director of Finance, City of Haltem City, Texas. Please welcome, this is my, Mr. Fong, and we miss her. But she come back, yeah. And if you, uh, decide to come back for employment, make sure, come back to Haltem City. But right now, we have a new director, okay? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, ma'am. You have something to say?
Yes, I'm going to say something about this. Okay, this is, uh, one of the award that the city of Haltem City receive every year. And in fact, this, I think, is about the thirty-first consecutive year that the city is receiving this award. So if you go down the hall, you can see a plaque there for this. And also, the city of Haltem City also, for thirty-one consecutive year, we're receiving the award from the, uh, government finance, um.
U.S. and Canada.
Yeah, um, what's it? Government Finance Officers Association for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award as well. So we get two awards, uh, from the association every year. It's a lot of effort in order to get this. And also, I would like to say that, thank you for the leadership of the city council and the city manager's office, and also the cooperation of the other departments in order for us to be able to get this award. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Boy Scout of, I mean Scout of America, and, uh, I would like to shake hand to all of young men and young lady here before you leave. So far, we have a lot of presentation and wonderful, you know, especially we have Scout of America here today. Now, we go to the report. First thing will be monthly financial report. This file, please, come here. Thank you.
It's hard to believe we are seventy-five percent through our budget year. We have three months to go, so this is report, reporting the month of June of our financials. Uh, as of the end of the month of June, our total fund balance for the city is at fifty-nine point six million dollars. And looking at the general fund, uh, currently our revenues exceed expenses. Our current revenues are at twenty-four point eight million on the general fund side. Expenditures are at twenty-two point three million. So those revenues exceed expenses by two point five million. In property tax, year-to-date, we've collected fourteen point three million dollars in property tax. Of that total, uh, nine million two hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars belong to the general fund, which is a hundred and two percent of our budgeted number. On the sales tax side, our sales tax collected year-to-date are seventy-seven percent, or seven million eight hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars, and that's general fund. Uh, and looking at the comparison there, uh, you have from, uh, the beginning of the year to current, uh, we're still continuing to see favorable numbers on the sales tax side. Uh, as of the month of June, we were at two point six nine percent. And our year-to-date increases three point nine three percent over last year. And I welcome any questions you may have regarding the June report.
Council, you have any, uh, question?
Thank you. I think you have done a good job live, Ms. Fong, so nobody have question for you. Okay, uh, the next one will be, uh, quarterly investment report. This is Jennifer Fong.
Okay, I'm still helping out with the investment for the city. So here we go. Let's look at the investment report. Okay, at the end of June, we have about six point seven million dollars of investment, and if you compare to the previous quarter, we have about, um, almost four hundred thousand more than the previous, uh, quarter. And looking at the interest rate, because the interest rate is reducing, so that's why our unrealized loss is much less compared to the last quarter. So it's about almost eighty-seven thousand dollars, um, less loss. And then, um, the interest, um, that we are cool is about two hundred and fifteen thousand. And, uh, weight average maturity, that's how long our portfolio, uh, the average is, is about three hundred and thirty-six day. And looking at the interest rate, you can see that, um, the interest rate is reduced from the previous year. And also, it seems that the interest rate is reducing because we want to do, um, to help the economy. Okay, all right. Looking at the portfolio, you can see we invest most of our money, about forty-four percent is in agencies, that is, uh, government-supported, uh, securities. We have about eight million dollars cash, thirteen million dollars in the, uh, investment pool, and certificate of deposit, about nine million dollars. And when invested in municipal, uh, security is about seven million dollars. So this make up the sixty-six point seven million dollars. Okay, looking at the maturity, uh, the city is allowed to invest up to three years. You can see that we have quite a lot of money in the one to thirty days, um, securities. And if you add the things all together, this is about sixty-something percent, which is within one year. So we have some in the two years and the three years as well. Okay, this is an interesting chart that I'm showing you the actual numbers, uh, like last time that I did. You can see that the one-month, um, interest rate is two point four three, three months is two point one two, six months, two point oh nine, one year is one point nine two, two years, one point seven five, and three years is one point seven one. What does it mean? That is to say, if you invest longer, you get less interest. This is what we call the inverse interest rate, that is abnormal. Usually, the longer you invest, the more interest, right? But it's not, okay? So it's making a very interesting, uh, period for us to invest, uh, government money. The reason is, if you hold the interest rate right now, investing in three months or three years, you get much less by investing in three years. But since the interest rate is going down, so even if you invest in less here, it may be in three years, this is much, much less. So, so this is a kind of, you know, and a little bit interesting way, you know, of looking at the interest rate right now. But, uh, Pharaoh Reserve Bank said that they are going to reduce the interest rate by about half a percent in few months. So we'll see how it goes. But they were saying that it's possible that they will reduce the interest rate by about point two five percent at least. So, so it's a very interesting fact here. Okay, looking at the next one, uh, this is talking about the economy as a whole. This is the U.S. GDP, that is the gross domestic product. How much the, um, uh, the whole country is producing. You can see that comparing to the previous. You can see that comparing to the previous period, we, we have about three percent, three point one percent more than the previous, previous period. So you can see that here. Okay, and how about the confidence? Because consumers' confidence is another measure of the economy of the country here. So this will give you a one point two one point five, that's the current level. That is the confidence, if it is anything more than a hundred percent here, that is good, okay? So we have, the confidence is about, the current level is one hundred and twenty-one point five. Okay, let's look at locally, Hawthorne City, how about the unemployment rate? Unemployment rate is pretty low. You can see that the latest we have is in April, is about three percent. The national unemployment rate is up three point six. So locally, we're doing much better than the, than the whole nation. So, are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fong. And the next one will be a report from Chief Cody Phillips. You name it, not hard for me to read, you know, except Rick is the one I have problem.
Even mayor, city council citizens, this is a overview of the third quarter stats. Just to remind you, mayor, this will be in three sections. I confused you last time. So it'll cover police department, it'll cover code, and it's going to cover ACO as well, okay? And like anything, stop me if you got any questions during it, because I can be able to answer them while we're going through it. Total calls for service was down four percent quarter-to-quarter, that's second to third quarter, and then up thirty-eight percent compared to the same time last year. The offenses between those quarters were down thirteen percent, and down overall, year-to-year, thirty percent. Again, no murders. The one that you see from twenty eighteen was the one on up north with the road rage incident. Sexual assaults were up sixty-four percent from the second to third quarter, and then sixty-six percent year-to-date. These, again, at the beginning of the year, we had the, the good touch, bad touch in the schools, which had the increase at the beginning. And this quarter, we've had, again, most of them were known offenders. We only had two unknown offenders at the time, and both of those have been identified and arrested. Sorry, one's been arrested, one, we're waiting on DNA results to come back before a warrant is arrested. Warrant is issued and he's arrested. Again, most of those are child, family member type assaults. Robberies were up four percent, two offenses over the, compared to two quarters, and then up one offense year-to-year. Aggravated assaults were up quarter-to-quarter. Of course, it's the summer, so everybody likes to partake in adult beverages and hammer out their disagreements over barbecue. And then down year-to-date from the time, the same time previous. Burglary of a building are down twenty-two percent quarter-to-quarter, and down twenty-five percent overall year-to-date. Burglary of residents are up twenty-two percent quarter-to-quarter, and then fifty-three percent year-to-date. Looking at this, most of these during this quarter occurred by individuals kicking in the back door and going in the back door during daytime. Again, it's most of the time, nobody's home, and the people that are doing it usually are not having to partake in work-related events during the day, so they find things to entertain themselves. They've been, four people identified and arrested. They're trying to connect those to separate offenses, but right now, they're only connected one to each offense. Theft is down ten percent, and then eleven percent year-to-date. Burglary of motor vehicles are up fifty-eight percent quarter-to-quarter, which is expected during the summer months, and then six percent from year-to-date. These, as you can see, most of these occur in both of them, are in District Four. And District Four is the northwest portion of the city, which contains a lot of the apartment complexes, and that's where most of those offenses and the, the next offenses of vehicle thefts are originating from. Vehicle thefts, three percent and up, eleven offenses are eight percent year-to-date. Our arrests are up slightly, and then year-to-date, they're up thirty-four percent. And that's all for the police department side. Does anyone have any questions?
Council, Thompson.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Chief Phillips? With all the issues that you've been talking about as far as for residents and for commercial businesses, is there any other tips or things that we could do that would prevent some of this, or is there not?
Oh, there's always things that people can do, but unfortunately, there's, no matter what you do, there's some people still going to get burglarized. Video systems are key, quality video systems are key. Not only do people use social media to put their own videos out, but, you know, the police department uses social media to put that stuff out, and they get numerous tips. And a lot of the arrests that you've seen have come from social media tips that the PD or citizens put out, that they identify some of these individuals. Some of the individuals on the burglary of a motor vehicle, another city, just, I'm not going to name too much of it, because it's still under investigation, but another city arrested three or four individuals, and they have an extensive past history in Hawthorne City, and they're being linked to a lot of BMVs within our city. But it was all off a social media tip that another city arrested, and they contacted, a citizen contacted us and said, hey, you might want to contact these people, because I've seen them in Hawthorne City, and that's what led to that tip.
That's good. It's always good. I know, we preach all the time, keep your doors locked on your vehicles, keep anything of value out. But then, when it comes to the residential, I can see where people think they're doing enough, but sometimes, regardless of what we do, it's like you said, they're going to do it anyway.
Another big thing is just to get to know your neighbors. If you know your neighbors and actually get out and talk to them, you're going to be able to identify things that don't fit in, and be able to call when something happens, or have a relationship with them, or y'all can watch each other's house when people are gone.
And I would invite people to participate in the upcoming Citizens Police Alumni CPA class. That's always a good baseline to communicate with other citizens as well.
And then National Night Out, when we do a National Night Out, if you can get block parties together, we send officers out, and CPA goes out, fire department goes out, and we actually get out and intermingle with the citizens, and that's another way you can get to know your neighbors in the, in your little area you live in.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment for Chief Phillips? Chief, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Got some more. This, this next section is code enforcement. As you can see, the, the increases, the inspections increased. From two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, we're up fifty-five percent in the abated violations, which means they were taken care of. So, once an inspection has occurred and a violation is noted, they abated it. They were up eighty-one percent, and then new violations that were identified were up a hundred and four percent. These are some of the categories that the previous council has deemed necessary, that they want to see the stats on. So the brush complaints were up three hundred and forty-nine percent. Grass complaints were up nine hundred and four percent. Junk trash debris were up twenty-nine percent. Junk vehicle, thirty-two percent. Parking complaints up sixty-two percent, and zoning complaints were down nine percent. We've recently worked a thing out with building inspections, where we assigned one of the code enforcement officers into building inspections. So Darla's going to be actually focusing on the commercial corridor and some standard structures to help release some of that, the workload that you see on like the grass and the brush, so they can actually focus on those and not be pulled away to do the commercial stuff. And she's going to be really dedicated and focused on the commercial side. We're going to look at that for a year to see if it's worth asking for a position for the building side, so they can just focus on the commercial, or what we need to do to make that more efficient for them.
Chief, did you study why this year we have more violation than last year?
Grass, because of rain. Last year, you can remember, we didn't have a lot of rain. And then this year, we've had a abundance of rain. That's the main cause of the, the grass, plus the new ordinance. It's actually identified, or defined, defined the high grass. So we were actually able to enforce that more thoroughly, which actually increased the complaints that are associated with that as well.
Thank you, sir.
The next two are warrants issued. So if we go out on an inspection or a new violation, an individual refuses to abate the issue, we have to get a warrant. Most of the time, to get the warrant to abate the issue, either grass mowed, junk cars removed, or what it be. Those are up four hundred and fifty-seven percent. Citations issued were up fifty-four percent. Leans filed on individual properties that had to be abated. You can see the increases of those between the two years. Any questions?
You want my, I have my question?
Anybody's got question?
I have, I have a lot of questions. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, mayor. Were, out of the citations and the leans that been filed, were these repeat offenders?
I don't have that right now. I can look it up. We try to, if it's a repeat offender, we go.
Make it more serious, yes.
Correct. We try to make sure that the violations are noted and that that is related to the prosecutor when it goes to court, so that they can follow through with that through the courts.
Okay, thank you.
You know, only one thing I concern about, many business have been closed for a long time. I already talked to Mr. Fow, and some citation acting like we can't do anything, because we can't find the owner. Is that true? I know he tell me true, but is that true for you?
I'm not going to disagree with my boss, so whatever he says is golden.
Yeah, I know. No, no, I don't try to create the problem between two of you, but in any way, we can do something. Because actually, like somebody know you come to seek a warrant or a citation, something, they try to avoid it, or they maybe leave somewhere in Ranbury, you know, something like that. And then we have anything we can do to make sure they bring up to code, or at least clean up the trash, you know?
Yeah, we're, we're working, that's, I guess, a compound answer. We're working on a rental ordinance to help identify in rental properties who the actual owner is, so we can actually, if, if you're a tenant, you really don't have ownership or skin in the game per se to get the issue abated or fix, correct the issue. So if we have, we have contact information with the actual owner, then we can hold them accountable for the violations. And that can, that can actually transfer over into businesses as well. So, you know, we've, we've kind of relaxed code enforcement, so if we have an issue with somebody not answering the door when code enforcement comes out, or refusing to sign citations, is we're allowing them to go to those people's work and issue them citations when they're at work. So, you know, whatever it takes to make sure that the offenders know that we're serious about this. And that goes back to your question, is repeat offenders, how do we deal with it? And those are the types of tasks that we put on our code enforcement to do.
You know, at the law enforcement officer like you, me, with thirty-two years, you know, the hard hat one, or the repeat criminal, they don't care. Go ahead, do it. But only the good citizen, when they make a mistake, or, you know, they forgot something, we cite them. And that's the one we only suffer from the law. By the way, if anything we can do, like we make a new owners, or some business, you know, because right now, on Twenty-Eighth Street, Bellk, a lot of junk there, and we need to do something about that. If you want to bring city pretty close to north of Eighty-Ten, then we need to do something, and anything like council and us can do to make a new owner with a staff, you know, we will look in at, and we try to make sure everybody have a property in Hawthorne City you need to taking care, or we have to do something about that. Thank you, Chief.
With that relationship with building inspections, but Darlo, there's really going to help with the commercial side of it.
Thank you.
Okay, for animal services, this is again, year-to-date comparisons. For dogs, we're down adopted forty-seven percent, returned down forty-two percent, euthanized down thirty-nine percent, rescued down forty-six percent, and overall, down forty-two percent. Feral cats, we're down thirty-seven percent, sixty-five to forty-one. Again, the euthanasia rate on feral cats are whatever we take in. The downward trend in the feral cats is twofold. One, the, we've kind of worked with TNVR a little bit to test the waters on that, to help trap neuter vaccinate and release. And also, the animal shelter, they help, I guess they evaluate cat, feral cats more thoroughly, because of Bob Watkins and I talked. So they're identifying domestic cats out of those that can be rehabilitated a little bit, and then trying to move them out of feral cat into the tame cats category. On the tame cats, overall, we were down in total dispositions forty-three percent. The adopted, we were down fifty-five, returns down sixty-three. Euthanized, we were up twenty-one percent, and rescued down fifty-seven percent. And overall, for a year-to-date, we were down twenty-seven percent.
You have any question? Ma'am, go ahead.
We talked a little bit before, and I got some good information. But overall, when I was looking at this report, it's, it's very troubling, because for the, this fiscal year, we have euthanized one-third of the dogs that we've taken in. And I know that as a no-kill shelter, there are exceptions to that to, to particular reasons why we would euthanize. But one hundred dogs seems like a lot to fit those two categories of either being very aggressive or having health issues that make them unadoptable. So that's troublesome to us. And, and I think that we, as citizens, don't fully understand what goes into the process of deciding what to do with an animal. Could you give us a little bit of insight as to how the decisions are made for the euthanasia?
Absolutely. On any animal that comes in, whether it's cat, dog, duck, alligator, whatever, they go through a process of determining whether, what criteria they fit, whether they're adoptable, not adoptable, if they're able to be rescued, rehabilitated. But we do not kill for space, say that pretty much every quarter. The only time that they're euthanized, if it's sick, injured, or ill. Sick, injured, aggressively, so those three. They keep a book, so anytime that a animal's decided to be euthanized, it's a two-person system. They talk to each other, and they decide whether, make sure they agree. And then, I showed you earlier, the book, and we have to keep this by the state requirement. So as far back as, I guess, the last ten years, I know they have books up to date. And you can go through there, and anybody's welcome to come down there, or they can meet me at the PD and go through all this and look at how us decided that a individual dog is, or cat is euthanized. Just because they're sick or injured does not mean that they're automatically euthanized. They look at the severity of the injury, the severity of the sickness, to determine if it's feasible for them to be treated. We have a relationship with some vets that we trade services for, so some of their animals that end up having to be euthanized or put down, or brought to them to see, we take those, we don't charge that vet, but we trade for services. So if we need x-rays on a dog to determine how injured they are, if they need medicine for parvo or something like that, they try to treat some of the stuff, the minor cases, before it gets too bad. However, you know, this, with parvo, we have to treat that really quick, because if it gets too bad, then the entire shelter is affected by that parvo outbreak, and it's more than a hundred dollars. You basically have to euthanize all the dogs in the shelter.
Okay. And on the feral cats, as you mentioned earlier, once you take in a feral cat, it's euthanized.
Correct.
But are there options for you to utilize some of the rescue operations to help with that? To keep from having to do that?
We do not officially participate in the trap neuter vaccinate and release. It's against our city ordinance. We, most of the cats that come into our shelter. We, most of the cats that come into our shelter that are feral cats are usually brought in by individuals that have rented a trap from us and taken it to their house. And then they bring us the, the cat into the shelter.
So basically, according to ordinance, and you have to follow the law, is that if the feral cat is brought to the shelter, you have no options. But if the citizen takes the feral cat to an organization, a rescue organization, they may be able to help-
Correct.
Rehabilitate and put the cat back out there.
If we don't know what's going on, we can't stop it.
Right, right. Okay. And then on the tame cats, you know, forty-five percent of the tame cats are euthanized. Can you talk a little bit about how tame cats would come to be euthanized? I can't imagine that they're real aggressive, however, you've shared with me that, yeah, maybe they can be.
During the last quarter, quite a few were bought in because their owners deemed them aggressive. So they either bit somebody in the house, most of them had been children. So when they bring them in, then we had to fi, follow the bite protocol on that stuff. So they had to be tested for rabies if they're not, if they can't prove vaccination and so forth, just like a dog.
Okay.
But again, and some of that has to follow as they're identifying some of these feral cats as possible tame cats. And once you move them into the tame category, they end up, you know, being, being sick or, you know, injured. And so then they have to be euthanized on top of that.
Okay, so usually when the tame cats come in though, it's kind of at the owner's decision to bring them to you?
Only, yes, on occasion, I wouldn't say most of them, but on occasion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. We'll have a lot more discussion in the Animal Advisory Committee meetings. But thank you very much, you've, you've given me quite a bit of information tonight.
And I can have them at the next meeting, I'll bring, have them bring the book. So y'all can actually go through and look it out, everything that goes into that process that's required by the state before the euthanasia takes place.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Zen.
Thank you, yes. So has the shelter been operational all year?
Like the actual building?
Animals taken in all year?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We're still taking them in, we're just utilizing different locations right now, the, where we're back. The shelter is back open fully now. For the most part, the, but we were utilizing different shelters to help off-site storage for these animals while we were going through the renovation process. But that doesn't affect the numbers, the numbers are what we actually physically took in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all you have?
That's it.
I have one more question?
Yes, sir.
You know, kind of funny, if you have video watching my backyard and you will see funny the mayor chasing a bunch of chicken. Right in my area, you will see a hand with a bunch of chick run everywhere. And I know there is somebody raising a bunch of chicken. Is that the animal control, we're taking care of them or?
If it's in violation of the ordinance, they will be the ones to address that, however, there are some state laws-
This morning, my wife woke up complaining and she said, she's chasing chickens, she, I'm afraid of them, you know, but-
Just, just be glad that she's chasing them. I've got videos of my kid being chased by my chickens and now he's terrified, he want to go to the barn.
I mean, the mother, you know, the hand is so mean. They attacking you, doesn't matter what.
Well, they don't want to be chicken nuggets, so I'd be fine too.
Good thing I have karate, so I'm survive. Thank you, Chip, appreciate that. Well, council, at least I make you smile, better than, you know. That's why I want everybody coming here, we try to enjoy the meeting together. That, this is serious business, but don't have to be serious impersonal, you know. Try to be friendly and welcome everyone here every meeting. The next will be consent agenda. We have item number four minutes and item number five, ordinance number oh dot two zero one nine dot zero one seven dot fifteen. I need any comment or any suggestion from council? The crow, council crow?
I make a motion that we approve items four and five on the consent agenda.
You got a motion now second? Ms. Liam Thompson?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Now we got the second and ready for, if you have no comment, ready for a register, you vote. Okay, we got six and missing up, absent of council member Ricky Brown and the item pass, both of them. Okay. Item number six, interlocal agreement, I call you Greg, go ahead, sir.
Sir, I think you'll notice I have two items on tonight's agenda. However, Art put Keith between my two items, I think that was only so you could announce my name twice.
Okay.
All right, my first item and item number six is, I'm asking council to pass a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the city of Richland Hills. This agreement pertains to the new school that BISD is building. The school's actually in Holtham City, it's within the red high trapezoid hill, red area. Escaping me, all right. This is Bellknap over here, here's Broadway, here's the old high school stadium. So while this is Holtham City, this is all Richland Hills. In fact, Big Fossil Creek is Richland Hills as well. So this school will be served both by roads in Richland Hills, water and sewer in Richland Hills, and it'll drain into Big Fossil Creek. So the agreement before you is going to cover the school, the pedestrian bridge, and there's the parking area in Holtham City. Regarding the school, what the two cities have agreed to on a staff level is since the school's actually in Holtham City, the school will go through Holtham City's plating process, pay our plating fees. However, when it comes to the utilities that serve that school, the civil plans, those will all need to be approved by Richland Hills. And accordingly with, this school have to pay any fees that Richland Hills has associated with that. Now, the pedestrian bridge, I realize it's rather small on this map, but it, here's that school site, crosses through here. And then this is McCullar and Weaver. Basically the same thing on the pedestrian bridge. However, the bridge is almost entirely in Richland Hills, except for the abutments on the south side of the creek. So here again, Richland Hills is going to have most of the plan review authority and collect any fees associated with the bridge review and construction, except for that small section that's in Holtham City. Lastly, and I think it's probably fairly important to mention, is that BISD is going to be responsible for all the maintenance of the bridge. So that will neither be Richland Hills infrastructure or Holtham City's infrastructure. And then the last thing is the drop-off area. So here again is McCullar, this is Weaver, and this is where they're going to have their parking lot with the bridge over into the school site. And being that that's entirely in Holtham City, they'll have to comply with our ordinance and regulations. However, when it comes to the drainage, it will drain into Big Fossil Creek. And similarly, we extend this courtesy to Richland Hills with any project that plats along Big Fossil Creek. If it's going to drain into Big Fossil Creek, we always let Richland Hills review the plans to make sure that it meets their standards because they are the entity that's responsible for the levees of Big Fossil Creek. So the agreement before you was drafted with the help of the city attorney's office. If you recall, earlier this year, you passed a resolution, I believe, that allowed the city attorney's office to work on behalf of both Richland Hills and Holtham City. Another attorney in Wayne's office is the city attorney for Richland Hills. They have, they're very aware of this agreement. They initially had it scheduled on their agenda for tonight. However, at the last minute, their meeting for tonight was changed to a budget workshop. And so it's being scheduled for their August twelfth meeting. But having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have any question, council? Ms. Councilman Crowe?
Yeah, Greg, on the safe routes to school, Birdville's going to have to pay, right? When they build this building, isn't there, they have to provide funding for safe? Anytime that any new building's built or platted or-
They'll have to, right, if that's a requirement of the city, they plaid in to construct sidewalks, they'll have to do that. The safe routes to school is a different program, that's what Keith will be talking to. Right, I do think that, and maybe Keith is more familiar with this than I am, but similarly to where we're, can apply for a grant to get funding to build sidewalks between residential areas or areas with high concentration of children to schools, I think BISD has that same avenue or something very, very similar.
But since this is basically built in Holtham City, but most of the infrastructure's coming from North Richmond Hills, how is that going to work? Would they have to pay for, will this interlocal agreement, I guess, define where they would pay for the sidewalks? Would it be in Holtham City or North Richmond Hills?
This, if the sidewalks were required, and I think we discussed that when we did McCullar, we are constructing sidewalks along McCullar.
Yeah, that's for us, you know, so, because I remember this coming up when we did Birdville or West Birdville. You know, they, they wanted to fund into the program because they didn't, it's cheaper for them to fund the program than to build the sidewalks, or at least that's my recollection, recollection from that.
The city has, when, when properties plat within Holtham City, the requirement is for that entity to build sidewalks. However, this city code does authorize, upon your approval, that in lieu of building sidewalks, they put in funding at the rate of twenty-five dollars per lineal foot into the Safe Pathways Fund. Right, it's a little bit different than the Safe Routes Fund. And what the city does with that, upon council approval, with that aggregate amount in the Safe Pathways Fund, we occasionally look for areas where we think as a city that sidewalks are necessary. Again, same type of logic where there's a high concentration of children in a school next by that we, we can see would be used by schoolchildren, we'll go ahead and recommend that monies be identified out of that fund for that project.
Okay, I guess, does the agreement talk about this?
Now, that's part of the plating process, since they're plating in our city, that would be a requirement of ours.
Okay, I just wanted to see if, so Richland Hill, I guess anticipating Richland Hill saying, hey, since most of the people that are going to be closest to this facility is in Richland Hills as opposed to Holtham City. So I, I didn't know if they wanting to share in that or get a piece of it.
I haven't had that specific discussion with their public works director yet.
I guess me anticipating, all right, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Zen.
Not sure if this is a question directly for you or not, but since a parking lot will be in Holtham City, correct?
Correct.
Will we be liable in any way for anything that happens in that parking lot, the city?
To me, it would be no different and maybe this would be better addressed by Wayne than any private property parking lot. The, the owner of the property is responsible for the maintenance of the parking lot.
That is correct. Probably the parking lot will be owned by Birdville Independent School District and they will be responsible for all liability.
Thank you, Greg, and no more question. And on this item, let I say this. Since the election until now, I have not seen Mr. Van Zen, Councilor Susan Saw, make any motion in agenda. I mean, sitting up here, you, you sit back there, you feel like, oh, that easy stuff. But when you sit up here, somehow just mumble, you know, what do I need to say? So I need, both of you, if you have opportunity, make a move or make a motion so you can learn, would you please? Item ready for motion. Councilor Susan Saw? Knock you tonight, how about, Ms. Van Zen?
Mayor, I'm going to pass.
What's she say? Pass, okay, go ahead, sir.
Um, let's see, Wees?
Ms. Council Wees?
Thank you, the matter of the interlocal agreement resolution R two zero one nine dash zero one two dash zero one seven between the city manager and the city of Richland Hills, I make a motion that we approve.
Thank you, and Councilman Crowe?
Ask for a second.
Did you do number six, right? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Zen, whatever.
I was going to second, but we'll let it go.
Not easy one, I don't want you to do that, next time, okay? Well, we got the, the second and now the, ready for a register, you vote? We got six oh and the item number six pass and number seven, T dot two zero one nine zip roots to school. Fisher?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is a continuation of the presentation I gave last council meeting. This is for our Safe Routes to School application. This is a part of our formal, the process, we have to do a, pass a resolution of support for the, for the project. And that's, that's why I'm here, this is a, is our next step in the, the process. I actually spent about two hours with an engineer today, walking the, or driving the, both projects to kind of get a better idea of everything. So we're, we're moving along, we have a deadline of August fifteenth. Just briefly, what I talked about last time, this is the two projects with the Stanley Keller Road, WT Francisco Elementary School, basically about almost a mile of sidewalk, five feet width, from Jerry Lane all the way to Field Street. About six hundred thousand dollars is that grant. Application includes engineering, which we're going to be, the grant will include full reimbursement of that. There's the map there. And the other project is the Estes Park with John D. Spicer Elementary School being the benefactor of that. It's about thirty-six hundred linear feet, we're going to do it on both sides of the road there. It's from Keating Road to Cripple Creek on the east end. Roughly four hundred thousand dollars is the estimate, including engineering for that project also. That's pretty much it, you guys saw this last time. And so, like I said, this is part of the formal process we do to, it's a hundred percent federal funds, zero dollars from the city other than our project management efforts, once the construction gets started. That's-
You ready for questions, sir?
I'm ready for questions, yes.
Council Wees?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Keith. On the Stanley Keller one, I'd asked about what's the extra cost going all the way down to Holtham Road? Instead of stopping at Field, were we able to do anything with that?
We looked at that today, we did, yes, sir.
Do we have any, oh, you looked at that?
Yeah, it, it's, it's nominal here, sir, we looked, we did look at that today. I appreciate the intent.
And any more question? If you don't have this item number, oh. Councilman Zen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
I didn't ask you a motion yet, go ahead.
Well, I'm excited, okay?
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept on the regular agenda number seven, the resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash zero one six dash one one.
You done better than Rookie a lot, but thank you, and the second? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we got a second and there's no comment or question, the item number seven, ready, ready for a register, you vote? And we got like before, six oh, the item number seven passed. Now, Greg, you come back again, please, sir, number eight. I promise, don't call your last name.
Well, before we start on this item, the word that stumped me was polygon. On the Carson Street Bridge project, the project is almost complete with construction. This project started years and years ago, but before it even started, the city entered into an agreement with Tech Dot back in two thousand. It was called a master agreement governing local transportation project advanced funding agreement. I'm sure that's an acronym that means something to Tech Dot, but means very little to me. But anyways, you have to have this master agreement before Tech Dot will get into a local project agreement. The city entered into- The city entered into the local transportation project advanced funding agreement, the local agreement with Tech Dot in two thousand eleven, and in two thousand sixteen, that we did approve one amendment to that local agreement, that amendment covered two items. One, it modified the environmental assessment mitigation section, in which case we had to notify the state entities of the upcoming project, and it also modified the cost share section of the local agreement, because between two thousand eleven and two thousand sixteen, the estimated costs went up substantially. To date, this project has had seven change orders, uh, change orders that were less than fifty thousand dollars. City manager did execute, there was a couple of change orders that were in excess of fifty thousand dollars, and I brought those before you. Those projects ranged, or those change orders ranged from the bird mitigation at the beginning of the project to other items, and those seven items amounted to about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The last three remaining change orders are for additional work in terms of installing sections, concrete riprap at around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Change order number nine was the increase in the amount of channel excavation, goes along with installing additional riprap. That was at eighty-four thousand dollars, and the last change order was an increase in the amount of retaining wall soil nails that were installed on the project. The riprap is held into the bank by soil nails. We, prior to construction of the project, we did quite a bit of soil boring to see what type of soil was there, 'cause that will tell you how well the soil will hold the nail. Based on what we had found, we, the engineers specked out what type of soil nails to use. There, a few lo- quite a few locations came up that were different than what the plans identified. However, that type of soil nail was used elsewhere on the plan. So, the point that I'm trying to make is on all three of these items, they're not change orders from the standpoint that it was work and we negotiated a price with a contractor. Tech Dot, like us, we use the unit price bidding method, so what you might have, in this project, they had eighty different line items of work. For instance, on a street project, we may have twenty to thirty, might be square yards of sidewalk, lineal foot of curb and gutter, you know, tonnage of lime added to the subgrade, square yards of pavement, and then what we pay for is not necessarily what's in the bid schedule, we pay actual amount that's put on the ground. In all three of those cases, the bid items were in the initial bid, however, what ended up being placed on the ground was more than what the bid quantities had in the original contract. So, a way to look at these is, all three of these items are actually cost overruns, or item overruns, at the same cost that was originally bid. So, we do have allocated one and a half million dollars in the twenty nineteen budget to cover items such as this. However, I don't anticipate, we will get the bill from Tech Dot until either late in the year or early next year. They typically bill us at the end of the project, they do their internal accounting and audit, and then send us an invoice. So, that expenditure, I highly doubt will even be made in twenty nineteen, so it'll carry it over to twenty twenty. But having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if there are no questions, I would ask that you approve all three change orders.
I thought the brick's already done completely, is not yet, or what?
The project is, I would say ninety-nine percent done. I was telling Councilmember Grow before the regular session, during the course of construction, we came across a pipe that no one would own up to. Uh, it was not a water main or a sewer main, it was not a city utility that pretty much crossed the channel and, and I would say blocked the flow, but because it's a pipe, water can get either below it or above it, but it needs to be removed. I couldn't get any gas company to identif- to claim it as theirs, the electric company wouldn't claim it. Finally, I did find a subcontractor that we are familiar with, they did go ahead and cut the pipe. In case it was gas, we did have the fire department on standby. Turns out it was, it was nine or eleven lines of fiber, and an entity called Fiberlight is an entity that owns fiber lines throughout the metroplex, probably throughout the state, and then they go ahead and lease their lines to like Comcast, Charter, A T and T. So, they're the entity, they were outside the easement, they're along state highway, so they had to relocate that at their cost. However, the problem with their, they have contracts again with Comcast, A T and T, they can't just call up A T and T and say, move tomorrow. They have a contract with A T and T, some Comcast, the other ones. I bring up Comcast, 'cause they're the ones that I'm aware of that have the longest contract. They have sixty days notice before they have to relocate their facilities. As of June, there was still one utility that needed to be relocated. I tell you all this because, once the contractor that the state hired is already gone, it would've cost the city, I think we estimated somewhere around seventy, eighty thousand to keep them on site or to remobilize just to cut this pipe and put concrete back in its place in the channel. So I'll be coming to you in August with a small engineering contract for that, to go ahead and dra- draft up the plans, hire a contractor to do exactly that, cut the pipe. So that's the really, the only remaining item on that project.
With the chain up item number eight, nine, ten, how much the dollar a mile different from previous one?
So, if we go back here, these are gonna be somewhere around a little over four hundred thousand for these three change orders, where the seven prior were two hundred and thirty, so these are quite a bit more than the, the first seven. But again, these are all, they're not negotiated prices, they're the price that the contractor bid in his bid schedule. It's just that the, the line item ended up being more work than what was identified in the bid schedule.
Okay, now, uh, Council Marion Hill?
Yes, um, with all the changes, we budgeted one point five. With all the changes added in, what is Halton City's part going to be in this total? More than the one point five?
This is all of ours, the, the agreement, and the, when I'll tell you, they're exceptionally one-sided when you're dealing with either the federal government, unless it's a grant, but in the absence of being a grant, these are agree- agreements are extremely one-sided, and they will fund up to a certain amount, and anything above that amount, the local entity, in this case us, we're responsible for the balance.
I still would like to know what the bottom line is of our balance, whatever we have to pay, how, is it gonna exceed the one point five or not?
And Tech Dot's working on that right now, what, our initial, I expected to spend about one and a half million this year and a little bit more next year, it looks like it'll all be next year. However, from dealing with the state, and when I say all, I don't know that number yet, 'cause I haven't done their final audit, but it looks like we'll have two fiscal years to go ahead and pay them back.
Okay, we can pay it out, just like we pay out mortgages, that's not my point, my point is, we went into this project planning on spending a hundred, one point five million, and I, I'm just wondering, with everything that's happened, how much more will we have to pay? And you're, you don't have that figure right now?
The number, the preliminary number that I have is right at two million. So it's five hundred thousand more than what we had budgeted in twenty nineteen.
And, and Halton City has no option at all about paying these overages? Because it is our responsibility based on the contract?
Right, that's the contract that we entered into.
Okay, and so, from the, uh, these overages are, two of them anyway, eight and ten, are, if I read the commentary correctly, are basically a result of underestimating by the engineer, by the Tech Dot engineer, is that correct?
No, I think some of it had to do because as the police chief said earlier, we had an exceptionally wet year, so there's quite a bit more of the material eroded along the project than what the original plans called for. So, the engineer didn't, when he drafted up the plans, didn't forecast that three years later, there'd be this much more erosion, which would require that much more construction.
Okay.
I don't know that it's reasonable to request that, that be considered.
Well, they can't be held accountable for it because they couldn't consider it, but we are.
No, however, there was a change order, I think I took to you the last time, it was somewhere around sixty-seven thou- sixty or seventy thousand dollars, and it was because of a mess up by the engineering firm, and they did pay a substantial portion of that. So yes, wh- when, in our minds, they've messed up, we'll go ahead and make sure that, you know, we get what we believe is our rightful amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, then, Council Grow?
Hey Greg, can you remind us why Carson Street Bridge had to be replaced?
The bridge is part of the overall Little Fossil Creek Improvements Project Phase One. So the channel underneath Carson, I say had to be widened, it was in, the slopes were fairly, I, was the opposite of steep, they were on a, like forty-five degree slant, and now they're much closer to vertical, that allows more water through. We also, in order to do that, we had to take out the road and replace the road and the abutments underneath the road. It's actually a bridge on top of a bridge, Carson is the bridge over Little Fossil Creek, and then State Highway one twenty-one is a bridge over Carson and Little Fossil Creek. So the abutments that were in the channel did not line up, by removing the bridge, respacing the, the abutments so that water could flow better, we were able to get the water from the one hundred year floodplain totally in the channel underneath the bridge.
Okay, and so the people that live in that general area, would they, if they had flood insurance, would they be able to get rid of the flood insurance and have some savings there?
So, the, the other item that I was gonna bring to you back in, or coming up in August, was to do the final engineering to deal with the Corps of Engineers and FEMA, so that their floodplain maps will recognize the work that we're done, so that the floodplain will be shrunk. And yes, those people that are currently in a floodplain now, but because of both the construction of this project and the construction of the channel itself, there, there will be a considerable amount of property outside of the floodplain, 'cause it will shrink, those property owners will no longer need to have flood insurance.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Grow, and any more question? If you don't, this item ready for a motion, and thank you, Greg, I appreciate that, sir. Councilman, uh, Grow?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the change order numbers eight, nine, and ten to the Carson Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, second? Ms. Wee?
For a second.
We got a second, and, uh, this item ready for ratio, your vote? The item number eight passed with six O, thank you, and number nine. On this item number nine is item number O dash two zero one nine dash zero one eight dot zero one. They're talking about board and commission. At the, during my campaign, I promised to make a lot of change, not a lot of change, I turn, see the upside down, no, we don't. But before we make any change, we need your opinion on the board and commission. We have a lot of people would like to circle in our board, but there is, we have a lot of board members, some of them sitting here twenty-four years, twenty-three years. And I just ask opinion, we, we didn't make ordinance yet, Council already agreed that. The reason I want is make sure we make each citizen involved in the council business, not only a group of people turn around, turn around for years to year, control the, all the board. Uh, I appreciate the service that they give, the, the time to it. But, uh, on the other hand, I would like to bring new idea, bring different people, but, you know, a lot of people ask me, what can we do with the current board member last so twenty years? We are not tell you to get out, no, you are honored to be board member, we will recognize you at the advisory board, or, you know, still in that board if you decide to. My question here, I would like to, because city mayor, city council, we have term limit, and why not board member? I want, the, the main purpose, I want to do this because I want each citizen believe the city belongs to them, and each of them have responsibility to search for any board in here, if they have time and if they willing to. That's why, and I already asked, uh, city secretary, Archimacho, uh, try to help us to create a survey, you know, not like general survey, national survey, something like this, we just ask opinion, what you think, what you feel about that before we can discuss with council for the new ordinance. And I will let, uh, Ms. Archimacho, one after one, helping me and the council to make a new ordinance if , uh, the citizen feel like not the way it's supposed to be, then, uh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. After the last meeting where the council said before they wanted to take action, and they tabled it to see about conducting a survey, I did speak with the I T director, Paul Burwick, and after trying to weigh everything, uh, it was not possible to be able to place a survey on the city website, mainly for two reasons, you wouldn't be able to count, how, one person could sit there and vote a hundred times in one day on their opinion. And there's no way of monitoring a single vote from a single citizen. Secondly, in accounting for the vote results, it would be, uh, a large amount of work on his staff to be able to sit there and count and recall what all is being voted on and placed in different areas. And the other thing is, it disenfranchises the person who doesn't have a computer, who's a citizen that doesn't have computer access. They wouldn't be allowed to give an opinion, uh, because they don't have access to this. We did consider at one time putting it in the Crossroads, but however, uh, Crossroads is a quarterly newspaper, you just got one put out, so it would be at least a minimum of two months before another survey with the questions listed could be placed, and that would, that would make sense because in a sense, the Crossroads does go to each person in a mailout, you could place a ballot on that, but then again, you're, you're looking at the time it would take to take that and getting someone to count it. So that's kinda the options you have, you, uh, to be able to do these surveys where you can just count and, and register as one vote, one solid vote, and not vote again, he wouldn't, he does not have the, uh, cap- capabilities in his I T department to do that, so we're kinda back to square one in how y'all want to, uh, uh, consider this.
Shall I say, some people, uh, maybe, uh, we have form in crosscode, you can cut that, and I already asked him to mail together with like water bill or something, you know? It is not a serious survey, but important survey. And if any person unable to deliver that vote, you call me, I will personally come to pick up at your door. We, we try to, uh, you know, the new council member, new mayor, that's me, I don't try to make a ordinance for you have to follow. Each time we create an ordinance, we want your opinion. Make sure everybody, the majority of the people happy. I can satisfy everyone opinion, but at least the majority, you know, say, oh, I like it, then we change. But the majority say, no, leave them like this, we are happy with them, then forget about this ordinance. Uh, what do you think, Ms. Archimacho, we can?
Well, you know, uh, in a degree, uh, not trying to sound critical, but if you only have nine percent people voting at the city elections, what type of turnout would you have for this? I think it'd be able to work this way, but it's just gonna be needing, uh, community participation in this, and I don't know how many people are gonna be willing to spend the time and, and putting it on it, but it's, it's again, that's, that's the option we have.
Yeah, we, uh, I will ask council the, uh, opinion too, but the main thing, like the national survey, the survey just a five hundred to one thousand people, and they pick up the phone, call the people, and say, would you favor with this, favor with that, that one? And for the five hundred people, for this city, or two hundred people involved in, the survey would be excellent, you know? And we just want the majority, if you feel like this issue important, then involve into, uh, ratio the vote. Or you can cut that piece paper and mail it only fifty cents stamp, if anyone say, I don't have the money for that stamp, tell me, I will personally come to pick it up, I promise. Okay, and this item we'll table again, and?
There is a, one, one council member, uh, I think it was, Mayor Pro Tim Thompson had a couple of items, she wanted to possibly add toward this.
Uh, yes, uh, in going over the ordinance, there was some things that we had discussed in previous council, I think in twenty eighteen, there were several things that came up, and one was nepotism, and that was- And that would apply that family members could not serve on the same board, but they could serve on other boards. So just not on the same board. We wanted to add the voter registration field, so that people could put their voter registration number with the county. And they were, just like when we file for office, we're required to put our voter registration number. Background checks would be performed by staff. Once someone turned in the application, it would be performed by staff. And no application would be entered into our packet unless they were... had passed background checks. And then we wanted to have a statement above the signature line in which it would say that all the information given was true and correct to the best of their knowledge. So...
Thank you, ma'am.
It doesn't have to be those exact words, but those were some items that we have previously discussed.
Any more want to have comment? Wees?
Thank you. I'm okay with tabling it again and discussing what Lynn's got. But at the same time, I was thinking about the survey. And I don't know if we should or not, but my thought process is, we post it out there as an agenda item, like we've been doing. People are aware of that, and if they've got an opinion on it, that's why we're here, so they can hear their opinion.
I think that's one other option, pretty good idea too, we post the questionnaire there. If anyone concerned about the new ordinance, then you go ahead. Yeah, I like it, Ms. Wees. And that save your time, save our staff time too. And I saw a lot of people share, yes. Okay, thank you. And...
Ms. Groh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm looking at section one, paragraph A, which is after E, okay? But it says places one, two, seven, and eight. I'm guessing eight is mayor. So I would prefer to say mayor as opposed to eight. Because I've never heard of the eight in the charter.
Which one?
So he's been mayor.
Oh, army?
So if we either get a definition of what place eight is, or we just make it mayor, which I would prefer.
Everything okay, Wayne? Okay.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, and going along with that in section D, delete and record, where it says, city hall council chambers to conduct their meetings. Just delete and record, because...
You're saying D?
Yes, sir.
And record their meetings?
Yeah, delete and record.
Okay, just conduct their meetings, okay? I'm not mistaken?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Retract.
Yeah, the recording has to be done, if they're gonna be done in here. Right, it does a part of it, okay?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anymore?
Yes, sir, go ahead. I don't know if our citizens can talk tonight on it, and I hate to put them on the spot, but there are several people out there I have high respect for that do serve or have served on boards. I wouldn't mind hearing from them. But I hate to put them on the spot. I've got the blockers out there. I got Mr. Watkins, and I got Mr. Lee Master. I have some high respect for their opinions.
That's fine. It's posted adequately if you want to invite people. Certainly, we ought to make a point, as just discussed, on the next agenda when we put this back on, to invite citizen comments, but you could do that tonight if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah. Say, again, I hate to put you on the spot, but if y'all have an opinion or a thought on the ordinance as far as the boards and commissions, y'all... I welcome y'all's opinions.
Welcome, ma'am. State your name, please.
Catherine Gunter, fifty twenty Roxy. And first, I apologize for my state of dress. I drove straight here from Memphis. We had a family funeral. I'm a recent board appointment. I just joined the beautification board, so thank you very much for that appointment. I do not like the idea of term limits for the reason that people coming in, like me, that have not served before and do not have that experience. I very much value people that have been on the board for twenty or thirty years and their experiences. They know much more about the way things have been. We can still bring in fresh ideas. I have a whole binder full of ideas for our next meeting. But I know the beautification board in particular has had trouble filling spots and having a full board. And I worry that if you limit the people that want to serve and the people that want to be there, we will not have enough people to have full boards to get the kinds of projects and things that we want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, but let I tell you what. Since we have a board, new board, new mayor here, I have a bunch of application. The people want to join the board, but unable to do so. Before, yes, we have run to five people to serve any board. Over here, when we mention about new ordinance, doesn't mean we already decide, say, term limit. Term limit here like ten years, that a long time for a board member. And you know, like, for example, some of the council here give me an idea, say, okay, if there is nobody fill up that place, that position, then the current board member will keep continuing until he get tired or somebody jump in and he willing to say, or she willing to say, okay, why don't you become a board member next time? I appreciate your opinion, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Ms. Block.
My name is Birdie Blogger. I've been on the beautification board for almost twenty years. I love it. I love what I do. I have the business of the quarter. I do that every three months. Mayor, you come. So does the city council sometimes. It was started back in the early eighties, and then the lady who had it just didn't do her job well. I love it. I think it's great that we can tell our businesses that we appreciate them. We're glad they're here, and we want to honor them for what they do. I think before you get rid of anybody on the board, that you talk to whoever's in charge. Christie Pruitt, I don't know some of the other boards, but if she thinks I'm not doing my job, get rid of me. But I've tried my best, and I will continue to do so. Term limits? Well, I guess I'd be the first to go at twenty years. But as long as I do what I'm supposed to do and make the city proud, I'd like to stay. We have been short members, three members, for the last almost a year. We finally got those places filled with the help of Mr. Archimacho, and we have a great board. And I think every one of them is gonna do their part, and I appreciate your letting me be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, but please don't use the word like get rid of you. No, we don't. And get rid of you like kick you out of the board. No, we don't. No, ma'am. This is just opinion, to see what you think. Because many people say, hey, I want to serve the board. I can't get into it. That's why this ordinance coming up, and we already discussed with the council, and majority of them agree that we need to thinking about some kind of term limit to get the people in. In your position, you have... You and your husband have done a good job. Excellent. Doesn't matter how long you serve. I don't care, but you have done a good job for beautification board. I appreciate that. But this just the council idea and me to see if we can make the whole committee involve in board and commission for... To make the city like, okay, they know, okay, so far you see many years here in Hottum City. The people thinking, okay, I left council, and may I do what they want? I don't care. I pay my tax. I live here. That's not my philosophy as a mayor. I want to change the culture of the city business by bringing the people here. You involve with us. You involve with us. You can be... I mean, in the future, if you say, okay, I'm get tired with it, you can be the advisory board or supervisor, or you know, something like that. We on way need you. Some people like you. He's the core of Hottum City strong. And let... I hear a couple more people want to talk here. Ms. Groh, go ahead, Councilman Groh.
Yeah, my understanding that all boards and commissions are open meetings, so they're available to anyone to show up. So the fact that you submitted a... An application to be seated at a board doesn't mean that prohibits you from showing up at a board. And you know, in all the board meetings I've been to, they've always been receptive to my input, even though I have no clue what I'm talking about. But everybody's accommodating, welcoming, and they look for ideas, even if you're not a member of the board. So there's nothing... If somebody has to put an application in, my suggestion is to show up even without an appointment. And so, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thompson?
I think that this was a concern that I had. I wanted to keep the experience and bring in new people. So therefore, I encouraged everyone to think about an advisory position where these people that have served long term would be advisors to this board. So you would have eight people seated on a board or commission, but you would have these additional people to help guide them and share the experience and come together so that we have experience in those that are eager to learn and have these ideas, that it can come together and build something really nice through experience. And then the fact that people have ideas that maybe have not been talked about before. Maybe they have, but it's a different time. But I would like to see that, where the board... That board would determine who they wanted on the advisory positions.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And go ahead, sir. Mr. Non Lee Master? My master?
Mayor and council, I agree with y'all on a lot of things, but this is one I don't. Understand? Absolutely not. If you look around here, there's people that made this city, volunteers. And they didn't do it by just coming into town today and getting started. Now, as far as pushing people out, wanting new people in, I don't quite understand it. Right in the charter, you got in there, if a person misses three meetings in one year, they can be dismissed from the council, from the board. And I see a lot of these meetings where people don't show up. And they don't show up, and they don't show up. Get your chairperson or whoever over that committee and that board to enforce it. I understand somebody being sick or something like it. But a lot of these boards and stuff and committees, people show up when they feel like it and get time. Understand? And so I think you're going down the wrong path. You ask for my opinion? Man, I like it, but you got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other guy first. What's your name, sir? Ms. Watkins? He... Go ahead, sir. Please state your name, sir. Thank you.
Charlie Roberts. Thank you. That was a great idea, Mr. Wees, to put it on the public forum thing. I might say this... Well, what I like to say... First off, I don't like the idea of limiting terms necessarily. Unless I misunderstand this, doesn't each council member appoint the person to that board position for the term of their councilship? Then each time a council member is appointed or voted in, then they have the opportunity at that point to put down somebody new on the board already. It's not anything you should have to have an ordinance for. And I think we got two brand-new council persons. There's two brand-new people on the board, if y'all so desire. And if you did want to make a, what do you call it, a term limit? Then put that as part of the... Would it be in the city ordinance then, or the charter? Where when a council person assigns a council, a board member, then they cannot reappoint the same board member that just left there. Keep it simple if you're going to try to make a term limit. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, sir. Ms. Watkins?
I'm gonna agree with Mr. Lee Master. Don't tell anybody. Particularly, particularly don't tell him. I think that may be the single worst idea I've heard in a long time. Without... I'll just go ahead and mention your name, being as high, you're the one that reappointed Warren Davenport. We'd like to have a killing a few years ago. He was... I think he's been, except for a few months, I think he's been on for like thirty or so years. And he got unappointed, and there was gonna be a mass overthrow of the government. I would mention Bonnie Richards, who we've got the world down here at the park. I haven't accomplished much, but since nineteen ninety-one, I've either been on the zoning board of adjustment or the liaison for the zoning board of adjustment. Except for about a year, because we had a charter. I was co-chair of a charter review committee when we decided the nepotism clause. So being as how my wife was mayor, I was off the zoning board of adjustment for a while, not very long. And then I had a disagreement with the mayor that beat her. And he managed to get me unappointed for about six months. But since now, and by the way, I came, like Walter says, I came to the meetings anyway. Just like I come to the meetings now. So since nineteen ninety-one, I may have missed a dozen zoning board of adjustment meetings. I enjoy the zoning board of adjustment meeting, because as all of y'all know, I'm hard-headed, and I don't like to be told what to do. And zoning board of adjustment, you don't tell what to do. But there's... All the boards are important. But when you come to the zoning board of adjustment and planning and zoning, EDC, these are boards that you... You really need all the experience you can possibly get. Past experience is very valuable. And as was said a while ago, the... There is the... There is the... Every two years, when there's an election, those people can replace somebody if they wish. And that's just been the last years. I was on for nine years before the charter changed. I never got sworn in, reappointed or anything, because part of the... Part of the... What it says is you are there till you or someone has been voted to replace you. So for all practical purposes, there's one board member I can think of in particular that one of the people wanted to get rid of. He just never reappointed that person, but that person stayed on that board. But you look at the... You look at the... You look at the library board, and you look at the beautification board. Those two come to my mind. I think you would be really agitating some long-time-serving citizens. And they will feel like that they have been replaced. There's nothing you can say that make them think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Van Zent?
Sure. Sure, sweet Steve Van Zent. I don't even give my address. Yeah, listen, here's the bottom line. I've been here forever. Yeah, listen, here, here's the bottom line. I've been here forever. I, I know the political side. The bottom line is, you've got some brilliant and creative people around you. Take some time, figure this out. And what I mean by that is expand, come up with cert teams for the zoning board. Get what I'm saying? You're brilliant, all right? Don't leave the politics aside and all the who's been here and who hasn't. Man, they're, these people are very well needed. Gunther, you was awesome. It's, it's all good, and that's what I'm trying to help you with. It's all good. Everything that we're talking about, though there's the edge and all that, it's all good. You've been chosen for a reason, guys, and that reason is to bring some serious understanding. So be creative, think it through, get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Van Zandt, and, uh, anymore? Go ahead ma'am. State your name please ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kelly Roberts, and I have not been in Houghton City a long time, so I don't know who's been on what forever. But I was just thinking, um, and it might be simplistic, but couldn't, instead of limiting time, could you expand the number of seats on each, um, each board? Or maybe the advisory thing is, is a good idea, but if you have more people that want to serve, what would the harm be in just letting, letting the people that have been here a long time serve and bringing new people on? So, just a thought, maybe you could just make the boards bigger. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anymore from audience? Without them, and, uh, I will close this one by saying this. You know me, anything I do, I always consult with our council members, staff, and especially citizen. This just fishing an idea. There is no ordinance yet. And if the majority say, okay, I don't like it, then we leave them alone. You know, that's how we work together because you are important. We sitting here may be limited life for the mayor, ten years. I don't know if I'm crazy to do ten year or not. But I, when I feel like ten year, my God, somebody want to serve more than ten year, must be crazy. But there is a lot of good people serve over twenty year. I appreciate that. Then, uh, I will close this, uh, discussion here. Uh, go ahead, yes, I'm sorry.
I was hitting my buzzer my way back. Um, Mr. Gro, I was just gonna address your, uh, place eight question. This is how it was explained to me four years ago is when we refer to the members on the different boards and commissions, we're technically supposed to refer to them by place, by who appointed them. So when I first asked several years ago was if you're on the board and you serve in place eight, that just means that the mayor appointed you. So that's how it was explained to me way back when.
Yeah, well, now we got in, in an ordinance talking about, and so, for me, well, ordinance is our law.
True.
And so, at least we put a definition what place eight means. So if place eight means mayor, because it's the place that's in the board, there should be something that says place eight means appointed by mayor.
Right, yeah, just offering that explanation.
Okay, I appreciate it sir.
And I'll.
Go ahead, uh.
Yeah, I'll just comment. We, we, and I'll look at this, you know, whether it makes sense to change that to mayor. But what we have in the city code right now is that, uh, the mayor shall nominate the member to serve in place eight on the board or commission, and that's the way.
Okay, so if it's already defined, then as long as we already know that it, it there. I haven't memorized the charter yet, but I'm working on it chapter by chapter.
I, I had to look it up again tonight too.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, thank. Ms., Ms. Saul, go ahead. Can you speak?
I'm gonna try to speak. I don't have much of a voice, but I just wanted to say thank you to all of you that came up here and provided input. It was very valuable input to us to try to make decisions like this, so thank you very much.
Okay, I'm Chloe on the, uh, this will be table again for the next meeting, but please do not spread the word. Say we try to kick the senior, I mean, board member out. No, no, and no. And this just opinion searching, you know, your opinion from citizen. And I respect all the people like both of you been serve for the beautification board for a long time, have done an excellent job. I don't know. But sometime when you enter the battlefield for something, somebody have to sacrifice, you know? And this is just the public, I mean, volunteer, and I don't want anyone sacrifice or bloodshed here. So we want everybody happy with the council and our staff, and please, one more time, do not believe we try to kick all the senior citizen on the board member out, okay? Thank you, I appreciate it. Now we move to, uh, we go ahead table, uh, this one for next time. And, uh.
On the next agenda.
Yeah, on the next agenda, okay, thank you. Now we got the, we don't need to motion, right?
No, you, it's just consideration only.
Okay. Uh, city staff report. You have anything sir? Mr. Raffel, okay? And the, uh, future agenda item. Any council have anything to put in the next one? I have seen none, and go to item number twelve. Resignation of board and commission. Anyone to resign, uh, from anymore? Ms. Susan Saul, go ahead ma'am.
Getting back to the future agenda items, we have pushed the food truck. I just wanted to make sure that was still.
Oh.
On the schedule for the future.
I thought you already mentioned last time didn't put on the agenda yet.
It's, it's for the next August meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was still on there. Thank you.
Okay, now Chloe, number twelve, thirteen, appointment, reappointment anymore in, uh, commission? Go ahead, Mr. Hillier, go ahead ma'am.
Yes, um, I have to fill the animal advisory committee, and I would like to reappoint Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson is the vet, and yes, he's been on there a long time, but he is a very crucial part of this committee. So Dr. William Anderson and Brenda Row Tramble is our current alternate. She's only been on there a couple of years. And then Patty Layton, who is a relatively new member also. So those three people I would like to reappoint. And on the daily operations member, Kevin Cleveland, that is a staff position that is appointed by the city manager and not by the council.
Okay, uh, right now we go ahead, try to reappoint the three first one.
Yes.
And, uh, please, uh, we have motion. Ms. Wees, go ahead sir.
I have a question. With Patty, have you spoken to Patty?
I did. I spoke to her. I know that there are some illnesses, but she's, yes.
Okay, we ready for a motion? Oh, she, you already make motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Rashia, you vote. Okay, we have, uh, six oh, the, everything done for Ms. Marion Hillier, and anymore? We got no more appointment, and now we have attending requirement, excuse absent of city member. We go ahead to make the skill for the, uh, Councilman Ricky Brown.
Do we know what happened? Why, uh, Councilman Brown?
Ricky Brown sent me to Texas morning. Said he would not be here. He's in vacation in Colorado.
Okay. I hope he has safe journey. I make a motion that we excuse Councilman Brown's absent.
Thank you, and Ms. Thompson?
That would be for a second.
Okay, go ahead, Rashia, you vote.
Excuse me, you're gonna have to do a hand motion vote this time, everybody? We, we did, we ran out.
Okay, we got, uh.
Okay, unanimous, okay.
Yeah. Okay, anymore absent, no, we don't have one. Exactly, okay, we have no executive session, so at the time, exactly eight fifty-nine, the, uh, the meeting at noon. Thank you, appreciate that.
You sure that's not nine o'clock? No.